All right, let's call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners' meeting, Tuesday, May 15, 2018, right after, a little bit after 10 o'clock in the morning. First, we'll move through the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes for April 17th, April 30th, and May 8th, 2018. We have approval of payroll, April 20th and May 4th, 2018. Approval of claims, April 19th, April 26th, May 3rd, and May 10th of 2018. And the treasurer's monthly report, March 31st, 2018. And we also have the comp time report on file as well. We move into Memorial Opera House. MTI Productions, this is a license agreement, show one. Samuel French, license agreement, show one. MTI Production, license agreement, show two. Samuel French, license agreement, show two. Tom Lounges, venue rental agreement. BMI, venue interim extension agreement. And Family Folklore Foundation, this is a venue rental agreement. It's for a non-for-profit. And with that consent agenda, I will open it up to the floor to the other commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next on our agenda is an announcement. I will turn the floor over to Commissioner Blaney.
I am very pleased to announce that our new HR director will be Rhonda Young. Rhonda's been working in our office for a while now and has proven herself to be very organized and very on top of things. And we think it's going to be just a very good natural fit to promote her from within and look forward to some stability and consistency in that office. Thank you, Rhonda.
I agree, Laura and Jeff. We would've looked a long time finding somebody as good as I think she's going to be. Yep. No, I'm...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhonda. Your continued presence in our office is well appreciated. Thank you. You've been a great addition to this team here, so thank you and good luck.
All right, thanks so much.
Yep. In the new business, commissioners, we have an appointment to the Porter County Library Board, which would be Stu Summers. Laura, you want to add on a little bit of that?
Stu is here. This is a reappointment, and Stu is the president of the library board right now. He's doing some really good things over there, bringing the library system into the 21st century. And did you hire anyone yet for the new director?
No, in fact, I got interviews at lunchtime and dinner time today. We have a board meeting tomorrow, so we should have it announced very soon.
So we should have a new director pretty soon and continue our improvement over there. So thank you for everything you've done so far.
I would personally like to thank Stu, too. There's been a lot of work going on over at the library board. It doesn't get reported, it doesn't get talked about a lot, but there's a lot of work going on up there, and Stu's the driving horse behind that, the force behind that, not the horse, but the force. But thank you, Stu. Thanks for your leadership. It's well needed at this time, so thank you. With that, I'll open up the floor to the board.
Okay, so who are you doing this for?
No, we announced it last time for applications.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Motion to reappoint Stu Summers to the Porter County Public Library Board.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the reappointment of Stu Summers to the Porter County Library Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Get to work. Thanks, Stu.
Thank you.
That's good. Okay, number two. Calimos, did I say that right? I believe so. Calimos Holding Group, this is an assignment and an assumption agreement for 157 Franklin. Attorney McClure, could you sort of...
In preparation of the closing on 157 Franklin as part of the capital improvement project, there is a telecom lease holder on the building, and this is the assignment and assumption agreement that would transfer that lease to the Porter County Commissioners in preparation of our closing.
Okay.
So this would transfer the rights to the lease and the payments upon closing to the Porter County Commissioners' office.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an assignment and assumption agreement for 157 Franklin in Valparaiso. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda is American Structure Point. This is payment application number seven in the amount of $27,942.77 for the plaza renovation. We have a remaining balance of $54,630.13, and I'll open that up to the floor for the board to take action on as well.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for payment application number seven for American Structure Point in the amount of $27,942.77. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. I would like to also make an announcement, too. In a follow-up for the plaza, we'll be holding a ribbon cutting here in the next 30 days. We're working on dates and times and everything for that. And also, we have also are starting to take, now that the plaza is open, we're noticing that accessing the building has changed a little bit from the past, and we've known, we've seen that our pedestrian traffic is changing a little bit. So we're going to be working with the City of Valparaiso along with our street parking we have here out in front of the building to see if we can consolidate some ADA parking and some other things to make the outside area a little bit more conducive as to how people come and go into the building. So we now have that front done, so now we're going to study a few parking spaces out there and see if we can make things a little bit more easier for people with disabilities to be able to access and get in and out of the building a little bit better. So we're going to be charging on that here in the next two months, too, to see if we can come up with some solutions there that'll make this a little more user-friendly getting in and out and coming into the building. So don't think it'll be a lot of work required in that, but some signage and some other things that I think we can make it a little bit more workable than what we have now. So I just wanted to add that for some additional business that's going to be coming our way here. Number four on the agenda, we have an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipts of the charitable donation for the Porter County E-911 Department. Scott, did you just want to give us a little bit of an insight into what that's all about?
This will be the first reading for the creation of a fund for donations to E-911. The funds deposited in this account would be for the exclusive purpose and spend on Porter County E-911 needs, subject to the appropriation by the Porter County Council. Right now, E-911 doesn't have a donation account that allows for people to make donations and for the fund to, you know, for the money to be deposited somewhere besides the general fund. So this is the first reading on that, and this would allow E-911 to accept donations.
Okay, so I think some of you come to our meetings, understand how we do public meetings. What we're going to do right now is I'm going to pause this meeting, and we're going to open up a public meeting. And with that, what we're going to allow, we're going to allow public input. So for the first time, for the first reading of this ordinance, first call, for anybody wishing to oppose this ordinance, please come forward. First call, anybody wishing to oppose this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to oppose this ordinance. Second call. What were...
Are we talking Plan Commission, Bob Thompson?
No. No, we're on number four, an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of charitable donations for Porter County E-911. Second call, anybody wish to come forward to speak against this ordinance. Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance. So now we'll move to the other side. We give one, the first call, anybody wishing to come forward in speaking in favor of this Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance. And with that, the public hearing is now closed. We will now reopen the commissioners' meeting, and we will open it up to the floor for the commissioners.
Motion to approve on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of charitable donations for the Porter County E-911 Department. This is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Second reading for this ordinance will take place at our June meeting. So a first reading has passed. Number five on the agenda, under Commissioners, is award recommendation for Valparaiso Courthouse renovation bid package number one, and I will turn that over to Attorney McClure and Deion. Want to come forward? Come on forward and sit up here. We're going to grill you.
You can get the hot seat.
You can get the hot seat. For the public's notification here, the gentleman sitting in front of me is Deion from Skilman Corporation, who is acting as the county's construction manager for all the projects that we have going on. So we're working, the Board of Commissioners works very close with Skilman in putting the bids together, in putting the bid packages together, meeting with the architects, meeting with all the other folks. So you'll be seeing Deion coming in front of us a lot over the next four or five months, bringing these bid packages and projects forward. So with that, I will turn that over to you, Deion. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. Good. As you're aware, on May 8th, we opened bids for what's considered the first phase for the courthouse specifically. Phase one, really consisted of two major scopes of work, restoration of the perimeter, exterior, along with window replacement. We wanted to get this moving along because of the long lead time specifically for the window portions. Those windows are very large. They're, you know, most of them are four foot by 12 foot high. So the lead time, by the time we start shop drawing process and approvals, those windows will take somewhere between eight to 10 weeks. So pending approval, if you do decide to move forward with this project today, one of the first things you'll start to see in June is mobilization in the restoration portion on the exterior. Window replacement, because of the long lead time, won't actually start until somewhere in August, September, by the time we actually receive the materials. So that's the first phase. Chive Hatterley's here in the audience as well. We're working with them closely on what's considered bid package two, and that's some additional landscaping along with some improvement of parking and also interior renovations. So we'll be coming, we'll be accepting bids for that portion. It's anticipated we'll be accepting that portion towards the end of June, and then we'll come before you again. And again, as you're all aware, we've been making sure the estimates are in line with the budget.
Yep.
Getting your approvals throughout the process before we move forward with any of the bidding of that work.
Yep. So I'm sorry to be long-winded, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Any questions from the board members? I know we've been in a few meetings on this. And so what we have before us today are two separate bids. There were two separate packages, correct?
Correct. Two categories.
And the first, as you stated, the first package was for the exterior shell and foundation work, and then the other one is for the separate contract for aluminum windows and installation and all that of that.
Correct.
And so out of all the bids, do we want to give a, do we want them to give a, let's go through all the bids, and then you give us your recommendations as to the qualifications and price and everything else.
Okay. For bid category one, which is again the restoration of the perimeter, we received three bids. Gary Construction was a base bid of $547,500. They had an additional for foundation wall waterproofing. What I will say is that waterproofing, we're going to do additional investigation to see the extent, because after talking with Chive, we think the extent may not be as much as what the alternate indicated. The second bid was slate tile roofing and sheet metal. Their base bid was $635,230 with the alternate of $158,000. The third bid was burgling construction for $775,250,000. Bid package number, bid category number two is aluminum doors and windows. Contractors JW Wurst, their base bid was $778,000. And the other, second contractor was the Lozaro Companies with a bid of $960,000. We did interview the apparent low contractors, performed a very comprehensive scope review to make sure they understood the documents as the architect intended them, to interpret them, and they had all the scope covered, so we're very comfortable that everything is included. For Gary Construction being their parent low for bid category number one, for a total amount of $547,500. And JW Wurst &amp; Sons for bid category number two for the aluminum windows at $778,000. So what we're coming before you is we're requesting approval for bid package number one for a total contract amount of $1,325,500.
Okay. Attorney McClure, do we need to do these in two separate motions, do you think?
We can handle them in one, and then as part of the motion, I think we just need to put it there as a notice to proceed.
In the motion.
Correct.
Okay. So I will open up the floor to the board. Any questions or comments of Deion or Attorney McClure?
I'll make the motion to award the contract for the two bid packages or not, we have one bid package, including Gary Construction and JW Wurst &amp; Sons, for a total of $1,325,500 and to issue a notice proceed.
Second. We have a motion and a second for awarding contract and issuing of a notice proceed to the following contractors. General contractor Gary of Construction for $547,500 and JW Wurst &amp; Sons for the aluminum windows for $778,000, for a total of $1,325,500. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Let's go get some windows. Thank you, thank you, Deion.
Thank you.
We will now move to Chair of Rentals.
Who I believe is not in town.
And this is for the annual maintenance agreement for...
Metal detectors?
Metal detectors. Is that in Portage?
Yes, North County Courthouse.
Ah, yeah, all right, I was looking at the wrong courthouse. All right, so this is an annual maintenance agreement for the North County Courthouse X-ray machine. I think if you all recall, a couple of months ago, we just bought a new X-ray machine for the downtown courthouse. So these things get a lot of work out. So this is with AutoClear. Any questions of the board?
It's a one-year contract for $5,400.
Thanks, Scott. Second. We have a motion and a second for AutoClear, one-year agreement, annual maintenance agreement for the North County Courthouse X-ray machine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, now we'll move to Plan Commission, Bob Thompson. Please come forward, Bob.
Morning.
Okay, so the first one, what do we got, Bob?
First case is Plan Commission Resolution 18-03, petitioner's Porter County Redevelopment Commission, requesting a zoning map amendment for a parcel of land to rezonate from P2 Parks and Recreation District to IN Institutional District. This is on 700 North. This was heard before the Porter County Plan Commission at their April 25th public hearing and was forwarded to the Commissioners with favorable recommendation by a six-zero vote.
Excuse me. Okay, so we're going to, this would be a rezone to, from P2 to institutional?
Institutional District. This is the redevelopment commission's parcel of land on the south side of 700 North, next to Porter Township Park.
Okay, so again, with this, we'll have to open up another public hearing and go through the same process that we went through earlier. So with that, we will suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, and what we would like to do, we will have first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone. First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone. Second call. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone. Okay, we'll move over to the other side. First call for anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance. And with that, the public hearing portion is closed. We will now reopen it to the commissioners' meeting, and I will open up the floor for any comments from the commissioners. Okay.
Motion to approve. This is going to be a good thing for the area.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the rezone. First reading, from P2 Parks and Recreation District to Institutional District. The petitioner is the Porter County Redevelopment Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. This will be heard as second reading at our next commissioners' meeting in June. Next on the docket, we have a rezone again. Bob, you want to take us through that?
This is Plan Commission Resolution 18-02. The petitioner, Bennett Storage Incorporated, is requesting a zoning map amendment from R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential District to CH High Intensity Commercial District. This is located on the west side of McCool Road or 400 West, just south of US 6. Oh, I'm sorry, Plan Commission heard this at their April 25th meeting and sent it to the Commissioners with a favorable recommendation by a six-zero vote.
Okay, any other, Todd, did you want to address the board or anything before we go into the public hearing, or did you want to wait, or?
I'd be happy to kind of make a brief presentation.
That'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What I distributed just immediately prior to sitting down here is the black and white, I apologize, could have been color, it would have been a little bit more helpful, but is a printout of the PowerPoint slides that we had at the public hearing before the Plan Commission. And I'm not going to take you through each of the slides, but the first slide shows after the cover page, at the two-acre parcel, kind of a long and skinny parcel headed back off of the west side of McCool Road, as Mr. Thompson indicated, the two buildings that are immediately south of that are the existing Bennett Storage facility that's there now. So this is an extension of the business, and therefore, it's also an extension of that CH zoning classification that's consistent with the property immediately to the south. But just as the existing business is inconsistent with the current home that we're rezoning today or asking you to do so, the next parcel north is also residential. So later, you'll see some photographs and so forth. Later in this, you'll see our landscaping plan that shows a significant number of trees along that north side. The thing that we didn't have when Bennett created and developed the existing site was we didn't have the UDO, we didn't have landscaping requirements that we do today. And so these requirements are actually code-based. It's not something that we're volunteering to do or anything like that. It's what the ordinance requires. When you have this very issue, when you have a business zoning next to a residential zoning, your ordinance heightens the number of things that those businesses, and Bennett in this case, has to do in order to soften that transition over. One of the things that I think is interesting, I've represented Bennett Storage in probably four or five of their projects over the last five or more years, is on the outside of their perimeter, they don't have a fence and the view of looking at the series of overhead garage doors, if you will, which I think is not as attractive as it could be. So what Bennett does and is planning on doing here on the north, neighboring those properties, those residential properties that continue to exist on the north of this property, you will see the wall of their building, and you will only see that if you can look through all of the landscaping that's going to be added. But you won't see a chain link fence and a series of garage doors. One of the things that we committed to do is at the, let's see if I get my directions right, so at the ends of the building, which would be the east and the west of the building facing to the north, we committed at the Plan Commission to make that, those little extensions where we will bring the security fencing around, we committed to make those extensions a privacy fence, in other words, not chain link, so that it will be more attractive looking to the north. And then as we wrap it around, we will link it back into the existing metal fence for the south portion and make it one cohesive site. That was very important. The landscaping ordinance requires a certain number of trees based upon the lineal feet, and so that landscaping plan is consistent with that. We're talking about basically three kinds of the landscaping. We have lot plantings that are required of any high-intensity CH-zoned property, and that's five trees per acre, 15 shrubs per acre, and we're providing that. We're providing twice that because why? We have two acres. So 10 trees, 30 shrubs. Then we also have street tree plantings, so we have to have a certain number of trees out in front along the right-of-way. That's your ordinance, and that's provided in this landscaping plan. And more importantly, what you see in that slide, all of the trees that are required to create the buffer zone, consistent with the lineal footage that we have. And that's going to create that screening that you have there. It's not simply lot plantings, which I always like to say, lot plantings mean we're going to green it up, but buffer yard means we're going to hide it. And so there's a much denser plantings along there. The other concern at the Plan Commission was drainage. This plan was vetted through the Development Review Committee prior to its appearance at the Plan Commission, and at that point in time, we did not have, and that's the process in the rezoning, we did not have final plans. We have a conceptual plan that you're seeing today. But when we go forward, if we receive your approval, we'll have to come up with detailed plans. And included in that will be stormwater drainage calculations, which Mr. Novotny, through that DRC process, will have to review. And we acknowledge that, you know, that's the next step, if you will, after the rezoning. We have a real opportunity here. To the west of this property is a larger parcel that Mr. Bennett also owns. That area has a low depression area, and we will likely move a lot of the stormwater from this property and from the property to the south and create a detention or retention opportunity on property that you don't see, isn't part of this rezoning, but will be adjacent property and... property and will create an easement to do that, and take the stormwater and hold it there and meter the release. So that's what we're anticipating to happen with the stormwater. Those were the chief concerns of the concerned neighbors at the Plan Commission, and I think we've addressed those with the fencing and the acknowledgement that there is more work to do with regard to stormwater.
I think it's important to note, the Plan Commission meeting, and this parcel in question floods all the time right now due to the other parcel that was put in when we didn't have the UDO, that we had all these drainage requirements, and I really think this is going to be good for the area. It's just going to end up, when it goes through the process, alleviating that drainage issue.
Okay. What's located on either side of this property?
North is, I believe, three more homes before you actually, actually 600 more feet north to McCool, on McCool Road, is another Bennett Storage facility. But in between that is a church and three homes, and on the south, I believe, is institutional zoning and perhaps another church.
Church.
Storage facilities are typically low-impact uses, there's not a lot of traffic.
Yep.
So I think this is kind of a good fit in that particular area as well.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. So what we'll do here is, since this is a rezone again, we'll have to break into a public hearing, and everybody's getting their money's worth this meeting here. So what we'll do is, we'll pause the commissioners' meeting again and open up a public hearing, and with that, we will give the same three opportunities to speak in for or against this rezone. So the first call would be, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone. Sir, please come up, stand right up, give your name and address, and tell us your reasoning why. Thank you.
There's a microphone.
There's a microphone right up there, so you can do it. It should pick you up. Thank you.
My name's George Stillem. My property is just north of where he was speaking, 772 McCool, north of McCool. Landscaping sounds reasonable. Very reasonable. That's okay. But your drainage? No. We all know commissioners should, I'm assuming all people, commissioners and whatnot, know our issues in South Haven with drainage issues. Same things, I know. There's pumps out there. During the rest of it.
I'm not responsible for the drains, though.
I understand. So, I guess. Bennett built that present storage building where it sits now, next to the new parcel of land of two acres, which is 768 McCool, 400 West. And at the time, he built it, I guess that was fine with y'all, but it isn't fine because it floods. It floods that north property of his, or the new property he just bought, which is a friend of mine, Patsy Moore, from many, many moons. Which my property is north of Hearst. And by that happening, well, it's also flooding the east side of McCool. I'm not saying just his parcel, but it has a big impact on that east side of McCool, which drains south. Everything drains south from 772, drains south to Midway, and just beyond Midway, which is where South Haven Elementary is, which is my other place. Now, those street floods, it's been doing it since the 60s. It's gotten better since, you know, what y'all have done with the retentions, which is a good thing. But now with the church, just south of his present property that's already built, the White Church Baptist, they did some redem with their steeping and all that, and they done a pretty good job, looks like. But the problem is, it rains heavy and whatnot like we've had here, but I've seen it worse. It has a hard time handling it. My concern is the drainage for the community, not only for my property, but for this community that I live in. And it's very important we get this drainage correct this time around, because the last time around, terrible. And I'm talking about the one just south of 768, which is going to be the adjoining new property that he's going to have, or does have, and he wants to rezone it. So I've sent an email out, I'm guessing y'all got it, to, let me get it, sorry, to Monica Gee. She has forwarded this email mine to Robert Thompson, Christian Murasco, I'm not sure who that is, but y'all.
This is Bob right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Bob Thompson, okay. Anyways, I explained what should be done also, in addition to what Bennett is claiming would solve this drainage, because I don't believe what he's saying is going to solve the total problem of the drainage issue. And that is putting a ditch east to west, a whole length of that property going east to west, 660 feet approximately, joining the north McCool, or the McCool ditches, which will be on, in this case, on the west side, but there's one on the east, which is the deeper ones, you know, much deeper, and they flood. I mean, I've seen them go down there to dry the waters, right to Midway and just block behind Midway. And it's coming out of that area. But that ditch should be in place, not, I don't know what, on April 25th, we had a hearing, a public hearing. I think Todd said something about a drain going back to the back swamp, which presently now is that additional land he has, he just said, that's a swamp is what it is. It needs to be dug out, and I believe we all addressed that last time, dug out to a proper retention, not just a swamp of land, you know? So I believe the ditch might help on this drainage issue. And I'm talking, we're talking a span of 600-plus feet of building, which is going to be the side facing my property, and what have you got, a 10 or 15-foot easement or whatever it is, I'm thinking? We've got 600-plus feet of a building roof with rain hitting it, where's it going to go? In a gutter? Is it going to be maintained? Maintaining this property of the drainage is very crucial, because right now, the other existing property, I don't see it being, I don't see it being maintained at all, because that little peapod retention he's got on the front side of that property, which faces right next to McCool, this flood, cat litters and everything else that needs to be cleaned out. How is that draining properly if it's just pulling rubbish? I'm talking, you know, landscape rubbish, not garbage from humans. So that's not maintained. It should be. It should be dredged out. So my concern is my property, and most important is the community, because we've got a problem out there, a big problem. I've been in there since 1970, I know, I've seen it. I came to South Haven School on a boat at one point in time, a few times, off of Timberline going down Midway in South Haven Elementary. It's not so bad now, but you keep adding problems, 600-plus feet of buildings, gutters? Are you kidding me? My gutters plug all the time. I'm always up there, getting somebody to do it, whatever. Are they going to maintain that? I don't know. I ain't going to do it. So I plead to the commissioners here. Work on the drainage of this, because we're just going to add more problems to South Haven, and I'm serious about that. I've seen what's done to Patsy Moore's property. Right now, if you go out there, right now, look at it, that part of that property is flooded, and that two-inch line that, I'm not sure if Todd said this last time or somebody from the commission, it's a four-inch line. Well, you know what? I like to see where that line is, because I looked for it right after that 25th of meeting, I don't see a line out there. My only reason I know is from my head here plus the neighbor there, Patsy, and her kids. There's a line out there, but they tell me it's a two-inch line. I yet to see that line. And if there is a line, why is her water standing right now in the back of her property, or his property now? No good. It drains into that little peapod retention they called when they got there that solves the problem? It ain't solving no problem. It's flooding that property. That's why y'all gave her a break on her taxes every year. I know this because I know it personally, okay? So to the commission, please, make sure they do their job as the drainage flows correctly. Landscaping? Yeah, reasonable, sounds good. But the drainage's got to be worked on good, and really focus on that. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this rezone? And with that, the public hearing portion of this rezone is closed. We'll open back up the commissioners' meeting, and back to the board, any comments, questions? Well, I, you're.
Oh, I didn't? Oh, that's right, he did.
Yeah, let's reopen, I got to reopen the public hearing, I apologize. Now, we're going to go to the part of the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for this rezone? Second call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this rezone? Third and final time, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this rezone? And with that, we will now close the public hearing portion and reopen the commissioners' meeting, and I'll open the floor to the commissioners. Thank you.
I'm very, I'm very familiar with that area.
I know, Mark.
And I know that you're, you know, you stay pretty close, or keep pretty close attention to what this office does as it applies to, you know, that community. And as you know, that, you know, we, last October, we committed ourselves to spending over $15 million out there in stormwater work. And you just so happen to have a board of commissioners president, that's the guy in the middle, who his thing is flooding. He don't like flooding. It's kind of his thing.
None of us do.
No. So, and it, you understand that it will not be the petitioner who decides what kind of drainage or how that's addressed, it will be the county, okay? And we've got some pretty talented people up in the Plan Commission who'll make sure that these are crossed and the i's are dotted. In regard to the Bennett property, I'm very familiar with the Bennett's properties, you have one on 1100 North, correct?
1050.
1050. Beautifully kept. And I got to admit, I've never, I've yet to see a car go in it or out of it, and it's a beautifully kept piece of property, very, it manicured, not just kept, it's manicured. The buildings are attractive, I believe they're brick, at least the fronts, but, and I, you know, as you know, that portion right there is kind of, you know, it's kind of, looks, it's kind of tired, it looks old, and it needs some dressing up. But I think that, you know, putting a new structure on it with new nursery stock, and that's well-kept, I think that will only help. My concern is like your concern, is that, well, we got to make sure that it's not going to be, it's not going to contribute to an already, you know, what is a problem out there with the flooding. And I don't believe it will. I think that it's, I think it's, you know, we have a team upstairs that this, you know, flooding is right at the top of the list, is what we pay attention to. And we're not about to spend $15 million to South Haven this year, which we're going to do, and allow something to come in and contribute to a problem. So rest assured, we're watching.
I'd like to piggyback on that a little. Not only, you know, I think this will not contribute to the problem, I think it's an opportunity for us to help start fixing that problem, because like you said, that water's out there today. And when Mike Navatney, our county engineer, gets a hold of this and helps these guys work the drainage plan, the hope's going to be to drain the whole area, not, you know.
Just that parcel?
Yeah.
And I'll also say that the county release rates, which is our, I would call Bible in stormwater, that's the amount of water that we will allow to release out of that detention pond. We have one of the, we have one of the lowest release rates in the state of Indiana with stormwater. And the reason that it's so low is we want to collect that water, and we want to filter that water, and we want to clean that water, and we want to slowly release it out into our system over time. And so, it's not all just about the quantity of water, it's how we slow that water down, how we control that water, and those are the things that we're looking at in the last couple of years that have never been looked at up here before. And that's one of the things we created the whole stormwater management program for. And we now have people that are on deck and on call to look at these things, and, you know, we're making a lot of these determinations ourself. We're not relying on consultants, we're not relying on other people to tell us what we need to do. We now have the staff in place to be able to look at these things from our perception. And that's very important, because when things don't go right, we hear about it. And we want to make sure that our people are, that are looking at these things are in sync with what we need here at our level. And so, I understand your concerns, I really do, but I, looking at this area and knowing that they're willing to spend whatever ground they need to do to give up for retention, that's good enough for me, because as long as we can retain that water, and we have the volume of area to do that, that is a win-win for everybody out there, in my opinion. And I do a lot of this stuff, so I just wanted to piggyback on what the other two commissioners said, so. Let him get done. So that's progress, by the way. So any other questions for the board? Or comments? Thoughts? Floor's open.
I will make a motion to approve with the conditions that we talked about at the Plan Commission meeting with privacy fence. My forgiveness.
No.
Do we want that as a written?
I think we got it.
What's that? Do we want that as a written commitment, recorded with the actual ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, saying sign. Motion carries. We have second reading at the next approval. Let me be real clear, this is for rezone only. This has nothing to do with drainage, with site layouts, with anything else. This is rezone only. So this is the first step in many to come. So the high hurdle race has begun, the first hurdle has been crossed, but they have a lot more to get through, so just want to be clear about that. That's for rezoning. So, thank you. Thank you, Todd.
Good to thank you. Thanks for your comments.
And thank you for your public comments. And we'll keep an eye on it, too. You, we will?
Oh, well, we will.
Your concerns are very valid, and we're going to, we're going to watch them.
Given the history.
Yep. Thank you. Next up is we have a request to vacate the unimproved right-of-way alley from Lucretia Street. This is in Boom Grove, in the alley from 500 South. This is in Boom Grove. We have petitioner William Dane. If you want to come forward or sit right there, you're fine.
You can hear me here on speaker.
Okay.
Just have a simple request. Please, this old property was developed back around 1880, 1883, I believe, and this alleyway was required, put in, or was required to be put in, it's never been used, but we may change, but we may, which we love it, but it's never going to be used in that way. We prefer it doesn't, that is, in small lines.
So it sounds like we have a good steward.
It's only one block, a block and a three.
Okay.
And only contains the really, what, four or five people? And that's people on it, that's what I said, that's what I said, people that have 500 people.
Thank you. Bob, any comments? Speak up for the drilling.
Yeah, I call this the Boom Grove Alley Vacation. Just to name the petitioners on this that sent this in, and that would be receiving part of the alley vacation, would be William C. Dane, David Fennerty, Jackson L., and Patricia A. DeVries, Vernon D. and Patty L. Hennings, and Jesse E. Ray. Those were the petitioners that were, came forward to us, they are all parcel owners that join these alleys. Staff did go out there, and we requested utility locates within these alleys. We did not see whether there were any utilities that were running in these alleys. There were a flag that marked it as clear, so with that, I guess staff recommendation would be to approve.
Okay. Okay. Is, is, is the alley been improved, or is it just, you're just using that as a term? Are, were they mowing it now, or?
There, there are no improvements out there.
Just grass?
Grass.
Okay.
There's a driveway in one of them that's coming off of five fifty south.
So, it's not, it's not being used to?
No.
For, from one road to another?
No.
Okay. This too, even though it's not printed on the agenda, this too will be a public hearing. So, and this would be a request to vacate. So, what we'll do is we'll close the meeting, public comment, close the meeting, first reading, and then there would be a second reading if it moves forward. So, just to give you the process of what we're doing. So, with that, we will suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing. We'll give anybody the opportunity, first call to come, anybody wishing to come speak against this request to vacate a right-of-way? Second call, anybody wishing to speak against this request to vacate an unimproved right-of-way? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this request to vacate the unimproved right-of-way? Now, we'll turn it over to anybody wishing to come and speak in favor of this request to vacate the unimproved right-of-way? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this request to vacate an unimproved right-of-way? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of a request to vacate the unimproved right-of-way alley? And with that, the public hearing is closed. We will now open up the commissioners' meeting, and I will open up the floor to the board.
I have a question about the driveway. It looks like driveway answers on what's gonna be one person's new property and what the garage is on the other side.
I noticed that, it appeared that way on the GIS aerial. I, I mean, ultimately, I hate going by GIS to determine property lines and boundaries. It really needs to be surveyed out, and that's probably one of the recommendations I would definitely make to these people here, the parcel owners, is they really need to have a survey done of where this alley is, where their parcel is, and where their improvements are for their properties. Just so they can have a clear and clear titles later.
Is that a condition? No? Okay. Can that answer your question, Laura?
So, that wouldn't be a condition, that'd be something they would...
Yeah, it's, it's an existing condition, because right now, the driveway couldn't be in the...
In the alley.
In, in the alley to begin with, so...
Yeah.
We're not, we're not creating a problem. We may be slightly modifying a problem, but we're not creating a problem. Mr. Dane, did you have something to state?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
That's the one alley, now there's, it's a two-part alley, it crisscrosses here. Is this the technical?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions, clarifications? Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to request to vacate the unimproved right-of-way alley from Lucretia Street in Boon Grove, in the alley from five hundred south in Boon Grove. Petitioner William Dane. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll be back for second reading June twelfth, and that will make it final. Yes, sir?
Slight correction, is it five hundred or five fifty south?
Five fifty south. Let, let the record state that change. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next up, we have Wildlife Management Advisory Board, Mr. Greg. Is he with us today?
I didn't see him here.
This is a request to approve a contract with Majah Design Inc. to revise a map and fabricate three interpretive panels for the Zona Wildlife Sanctuary in Westville in the amount of one thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I have motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a request to approve a contract with Majah Design to revise a map and fabricate three interpretive panels for Zona Wildlife Sanctuary in Westville in the amount of one thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Kankakee River Basin Commission, Jody Melton. This is a request to approve a resolution of the Porter County Board of Commissioners supporting the establishment and awarding of economic development district status by the Economic Development Administration. Good morning, Jody.
That's quite a mouthful, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. How you doing?
I'm, I'm good. I am here...
I'm hearing some rumors that you're gonna be retiring.
This is my last year. I will, it will be done as of the end of twenty eighteen. I fought water long enough, it's time to quit for a while. And this last time was, was, was a bad time.
Yeah, I was, uh...
I, I'm here not with my Kankakee hat, but with my regional planner hat on. I have been helping with the Northwest Indiana Economic Development District. Actually, the, the planning started in twenty ten. The forum and NERCSE got together and created an independent board because that's what the EDA said we needed to do. We're trying to get districts, economic development district status for the three counties. The planning started in twenty ten. In twenty fourteen, after the, the comprehensive economic development strategy was created, we had an independent board created from members of the forum and members of NERCSE. We started out with twenty-four, we cut it down to twelve members from, from the three counties, and we submitted the application to EDA in Chicago. And one of the things that we had to have was a resolution from the Board of Commissioners from each of the three counties endorsing the Economic Development District to be, to receive that status. You may remember, and you, you did it, I, I remember who was sitting on the board at the time, in twenty fourteen. Porter County Commissioners endorsed that. Last year, I showed up here and said, EDA got a hold of us and said, well, those are old resolutions. Well, that's because they sat on that application for three years, but they wanted you to redo it, and you did. Okay, so now we're federal bureaucracy. They're back, and they said to us, we don't think you need an independent board. We've looked over the roster of the NERCSE membership, and the NERCSE can be the Economic Development District. So, now they're telling us to, to resubmit the application, not in the name of that independent board of the twelve members, but in the name of NERCSE, and that they will make NERCSE the Northwest Indiana Economic Development District. So, I'm here today to ask you to change the wording on the resolution.
I've asked twice.
To change it again to endorse NERCSE to be the Economic Development District. And I told Todd Warner, this is getting pretty embarrassing, but I'm, I'm here today, I'm in La Porte tomorrow night, and in Crown Point tomorrow, so...
Okay. Thank you.
So, my, so my request is, is that you endorse NERCSE to be the Economic Development District. One of the interesting things I just found out is EDA has some money floating around to deal with some of this flooding damage. And there's, there's this webinar which I've gotta sit in on. We would not qual, well, we probably don't qualify because we're not a development district yet, but once we get that in, we would qualify for that.
Okay.
Okay?
That's interesting. Thank you, Jody.
So, okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, too. So, we need to approve this resolution, correct? And that's just a simple vote, right, Scott? We don't need a public hearing again?
We don't.
Good.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on a request to approve a resolution of the Porter County Board of Commissioners supporting the establishment and awarding of economic development district status by the Economic Development Administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll miss you, Jody. We'll miss ya. Sherwood Forest POA Julie Young, community manager.
I heard she wasn't gonna make it.
She's not gonna make it, okay. This is a request to place a stop sign at the intersection of Wexford Road and Ashford Road in the Sherwood Forest subdivision. Sherwood Forest came to us several months ago wanting a stop sign at this location to sort of try and slow down some traffic. We basically said, since Sherwood is sort of an entity that is unique to county government, we said as long as you have a, a vote, a documented vote and approval from your POA, we would be more than happy to accommodate. And we did get that. So, just so everybody knows, this has been fully vetted by the membership of Sherwood POA, and now it's up to us to take action either way. So, that is, that's the short narrative on that. I will open up the floor if the, the board has any questions or comments.
Motion to approve a stop sign at Wexford Road and Ashford.
Second. We got a motion and a second for a request to place a stop sign at the intersection of Wexford Road and Ashford Road in the Sherwood Forest subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Northwest Indiana Green Party, Michael Garcher.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, we're, we're the front man of this, this rally. It's a peace rally, Voices for Nonviolence. It is basically open to one and all, all people of goodwill who are interested in peace. It's a meeting, generated, funded. One of our great interests is a nonviolence and peace. It's not a widely known organization. We do have cross-memberships, like I mean Sierra Club, and they're a little bit better known, they have many of the same goals. In other words, it would serve the entire community of people who are interested in world events that are going on now in North Korea, Iraq, the fifty-six hot wars going around the United States of the world right now. So, it is of general interest, and it is, you know, it's a good thing.
And that will be held, so what you're requesting is they wanna hold a rally on the north side of the courthouse on Saturday, June second, in two thousand eighteen, from noon until two P.M. The estimated number of attendees will be fifty to one hundred, and they will also be using speakers to address the gathering.
A very small speaker, closed box.
He knew we were gonna ask that question, I could tell. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Will they have any interaction with our construction? Will we be starting?
Saturday, June second, I don't think, that's like in a month. Yes, I think we'll be fine. I think we'll be fine.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a request to hold a peace rally for Voices for Nonviolence to be held on the north side of the courthouse on Saturday, June second, two thousand eighteen, from noon to two P.M. Yes, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You're good to go.
It's the weather.
Hope you have a good, a good rally.
Can I add?
Yeah. Next, we have Melissa Decurth, Deckerth, come forward.
Tell us how to pronounce your name.
Did I say your last name right?
Decurth.
Decurth. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
This is a request to use the north side of the courthouse on Saturday, May nineteenth, this year, from eight A.M. till two P.M. to march against Monsanto. There will be posters no larger than twenty-four by thirty-six inches, and they will be handing, handing out flyers. This is a peaceful march to bring awareness of the dangers of genetically-modified foods. They are expecting between thirty to two hundred people to attend. Any questions with the board? Comments?
I didn't put it in there, I'm not sure, there may be a megaphone, I don't, depending on how many people come.
Okay.
I'm not sure, this was the last minute.
It's on a Saturday.
Yeah.
It's on a Saturday, so we just, we just don't want the big blaring speakers because of all the restaurants and other things that are downtown, we just...
And the courts during the...
Yeah. Okay.
And we ask that anything you hand out, if it's dropped, or somebody throws it, if it's dropped on the ground, please pick it up and toss it, keep it or toss it in the trash, but just don't leave it laying there. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, a request to use the north side of the courthouse on May nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, from eight A.M. to two P.M. to march against Monsanto. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Bob.
One thing you might wanna consider, you, you already have, if you're marching on the sidewalk, that's Velpo, so you need to talk to Alvarado, the city of Alvarado, too. Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you. And that comes to the end of our agenda. Is there anybody in this, wishing to address this body? Nobody? No takers? And with that, this is...
Yep. I wanted to report to those two commissioners that, working with the Plan Commission, we had, you may, you may have known that several months ago, we had received a complaint on a property that had been abandoned on Redbud off of Indian Boundary Road in unincorporated Porter County. And the property had been abandoned for the better part of ten years, the roof had collapsed on it, fell through the, through the main floor into the basement. Animals had gotten in, there was, you know, two or three inches of feces all through the house. Contacted the health department, the health department, did deem it, deem it as a health hazard. Through the aggressive efforts of the Board of Commissioners, of, with the, with the tax sales, we, we got it back on the, on the rolls. It did sell, it was sold to an investor out of Florida. That investor hired Marshals Escavating. They went in last week, took the structure off, off the property, including the basement, filled it all in, rolled it all out, it looks great now. And, and I think it's just, it is, it's just reflective of the enhanced effort that, that the board did on advertising the commissioners' tax sales. And, and this, you know, this investor found it online, invested, and problem solved. So, I just, I just wanted to make the commissioners aware of that.
Good thing, and thank you, Vicky, for your role in getting the word out.
Vicky's office, and a lot of heavy lifting was done by the Plan Commission, specifically Joey Lar. I would also like to say, you know, this has been something that Commissioner Biggs has said, has been something that has sort of been lagging with the county out there for some time, and we're, I think it was last year, about fourteen months ago, when the county went in and raised some of our fees on fences, patios, and other things for the Plan Commission that had not been raised in over thirteen years. When we raise those fees for those type of accessory structures and things like that, we are taking a portion of those fees and we're putting it into a fund which we established, everybody now knows how you establish a fund. We established a fund, and, and what's happening is now that we're, we're gaining money in that fund now, to where we actually have monies now to go out and do these kind of things. The highway department in the past hadn't been as cooperative in helping us do these type of things, and now they are. And so, we're able to go out and do these things with our own equipment and with our own manpower to try and save the taxpayers' money, but also try to get these back on the rolls. So, through a combination of about three different things, we think we have a program in place now, it's been a year to where we can start getting some money. So, you'll be seeing a little bit more of this coming forward as we, we move forward to the future to try and get rid of some of these derelict homes out there that are hurting other people's values and isn't really what we're all about here in Porter County. So, we're, it's one more cog in the wheel that we're gonna go after and, and get aggressive with and, and try to clean some things up out there. So, and I know Commissioner Biggs is, is, is taking that charge and is out there working real hard at it. So, we're, you will see more of this going forward. So, thank you, Commissioner Biggs. Any other things?
Yeah, one of the other things that we're working on as far as that goes, is the Plan Commission, the office is putting together a rating system to, you know, let us determine which properties need to be taken care of first, because we still do have limited resources to deal with them.
The fund that Commissioner Good had, had mentioned currently has over fifty thousand dollars setting in it. So, we do have some resources now to, to, to approach, you know, some properties that this, that we will eventually identify and then rate, and then put on a list of properties to be dealt with first, so everything seems to be working great.
And not all of these properties are delinquent on taxes.
Yeah, that's the other problem, they're not delinquent.
But, there's a different twist to it.